Good evening, audience members. The time is 5:30. I am waiting for a quorum, so as soon as we get another trustee, we will get started. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for my tardiness. Fifteen was about two and a half hours getting from Ontario here. We all know I do work in San Bernardino. It took me two hours and thirty minutes to get here today. Okay, so as I catch my breath, I want to say, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Today is Tuesday, August the fifteenth, and the time is 5:36. Call to order. Ms. LeVey, please take the role.
Trustee Benz.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto here.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench.
Trustee LaFrench is here and excited to be here. Form is established. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we do. Item twelve point two eight, Business Services, Approval of the Renewal Agreement with Eb Meyer Charter for Supplemental Transportation. That should be a ratification.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to section two point oh two, adoption of the agenda. With the exception of two point twelve.
We're including the change that was made, the adjustment.
Okay. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Trustee Turner, I motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Webster, I second.
Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. Moving on to section three, Cabinet Reports. Mr. Kraus.
Just thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Good evening this evening. It is a wonderful August night. We are very excited to report that we're off to a good start for the school year. Schools started on August seventh, and we have a lot of happy students that came back, a lot of happy staff members. So we're excited to see their faces. Our enrollment is currently around seventy six hundred, but our attendance right now, we're still having students come in. So we're about around seven thousand right now. So we're down about eight hundred, but it's usually that way until after Labor Day. So we're excited to welcome all our families back, and we continue to see our enrollment center packed daily with parents and families coming in to enroll their students is also bringing them back from their summer vacation. So very excited about that. We were also excited on August second to have our welcome back for all of our staff in the district. We had that at Melva Davis Academy of Excellence in their gymnasium. We were excited to see all of our staff members come back. We had a a great day of PD and a great day of fellowship there for all of our staff. And there was a I want to thank Jen Rader for her speech to all of our staff members, and then Diane Lynn, they both Diane, as you well know, is the CSEA president, and Jen Rader is the ADTA president. And so they actually came as well as our board members and said a few words and always appreciate their positive comments when they get the chance to speak to all of our staff, because that's hardly hardly happens. But our welcome backs are a very good time to really come in and talk to all of our staff. So we're excited about that, and we had a couple raffles there, and we actually had some winners this year instead of last year where I kept calling numbers and nobody had a ticket. So we're excited that we had some winners this year on that. So very excited for that one. One of the other things that we had that same day, we had secretaries training, so we're excited, and I want to thank all of our staff that participated in helping our secretaries up at West Creek learn more about what they do on their daily jobs. For instance, Zach Clements, our director of fiscal, had his team up there talking about payroll, talking about other things that they do there to help our secretaries throughout the year. We have, it's amazing, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but if we look at how long our secretaries have been with us, there are many of them that have been with us over twenty plus years. And so we're excited to have such longevity amongst our CSEA staff, and I know we have many teachers as well that have been with us twenty plus years. And so we're very excited that they choose to come back year after year and help our students here in Adelanto. So we did have that going on that day. We also had our management retreat at the end of July, so before school starts, well, one of the things we like to do is get all of our principals together, our managers together, and talk about the next school year, logistics, how we can make it the best year ever. And so again, our theme is cultivate creative kindness. So we talked about how we can cultivate that this year amongst our staff. We were excited about that. One of the other things that I want to let everyone know about, over the the last month, we were made aware in the Eagle Ranch community that there is a transitional house going in over there. And if you're not aware of transitional housing, it's for people that are trying to get permanent housing, may have had some bad circumstances in their past, but we are aware, we are working with the city of Victorville, who is working with the people that are putting the house in there. We're monitoring it because we take the safety of our neighborhoods and our staff and our community seriously. I will let you know that we had board members in attendance at a community meeting that we had at Eagle Ranch that the city presented with the mayor, Deborah Jones, was there, and the city manager, and they gave a brief update on what's going in and when it potentially will go in. Mr. Wilson, the principal of Eagle Ranch is also was there, very up to date on the transitional housing. So I know there's been some questions out there about it, and just to let everybody know, we are vigilant in our communities, in every community, and we will continue to monitor when this housing does go in, because again, it is residential, and it is right in the middle of a housing tract over by Eagle Ranch Elementary. So just want to let everybody know, we are on it. And if there's any questions or comments that you may have, you may reach out to Mr. Wilson at Eagle Ranch, any of the families from the Eagle Ranch area, and you can also reach out to Xenia LeVey, our executive assistant for the superintendent's office, and you know, with any questions you may have, and we'll try to direct you to the resources that the city provides related to that. So we have that. And then also, this evening, I wanted to just give a brief update on some HR matters, because as you know, right now, we're currently in transition. And Dr. Dwyson, I want to thank her because she is overseeing certificated HR right now, and I'm overseeing classified. So we're wearing a couple hats, but just a quick update on the classified human resources. So we continue to hire staff members, which is great. We're very excited to be able to continue filling our positions that are empty. So we hired eight classified positions this year in the last, since the last board meeting. We have thirty five volunteers that have been board approved to start this new school year at various places. We're excited about that. That always goes through HR, because our volunteers have to be fingerprinted. There's a very intense process they go through. We did host the classified substitute welcome back, staff did in HR, we're excited about that. And they had clerical training, which was very well received. And then again, as we talked about the secretary clerk meeting that was at West Creek, and we were excited to have the different departments, business department, risk management, transportation, CNS, IT, other departments go up there and work with them. And so there was the feedback, we always get feedback, and there was very positive feedback related to those meetings as well. And then before we move on to Dr. Dwyson, I just want to turn it over to the board president for a moment, because we do want to recognize the passing of one of our employees. And so, Madam President, if you will.
We would like to observe a moment of silence.
We would like to observe a moment of silence for Anna Kanto. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Anna was the secretary at Eagle Ranch Elementary School, and we, our hearts and minds and prayers are out with her family, as well as the Eagle Ranch community as we look to. It's hard to fill her shoes, but we are currently seeking a secretary for Eagle Ranch. And so again, our hearts go out to the Kanto family. And with that, I'd like to turn, oh, by the way, thank you, Ms. Rader, for the eggs. Jen Rader is the ADTA president, but she also is a I would say farmer of eggs. I'm not sure what exactly you call somebody that raises chickens and eggs, but thank you. She delivered to the board and staff up here this evening dozen eggs, each of her eggs, and I've never had eggs out of, straight out of the, wherever they come from. So thank you, Ms. Rader, for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson at this time.
Let me get myself together for a second. All right. Good evening, Board President LaFrench, Board of Trustees, AESD staff and community. I am very excited to share some highlights from the academic services and certificated HR this evening. So we've had quite a busy start to the year, and I want to thank everyone in our academic services team for supporting the start of the new school year. So we're preparing our annual Williams case visits to check facilities and core instructional materials. We have nine schools being visited. We want to thank our curriculum center clerks, Wendy and Mary, for their hard work in preparing us as we start those. We held, Mr. Kraus mentioned, our management and site admin retreat in which we set our priorities for the year. So part of that meeting, we do take a day and a half with just our instructional leaders, our principals and our assistant principals. And we focused on our instructional focus this year, which is our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. Our year will be focused on how we are meeting the needs of all of our students. And when we say all, this means the whole child. How are we meeting the social, emotional, behavioral, mental health, as well as academic needs for each and every single one of our students? We want to ask the question of each other, what do we want all of our students leaving, knowing, understanding, and feeling as they embark in the world after being a part of AESD? Part of this work also included the launch of our comprehensive instructional guides and using our resources to make sure we're focused on the standards. So while focusing on MTSS, that aligns with our tier one instruction and ensures that we teach our students the standard. So I want to thank all of our teachers again, who helped us over the summer and also helped us on the PD day with supporting that launch of the SIGs. We call them SIGs for short. And so we have a SIG council, which is going to help us through the year enhance, refine, and reflect on those, so we keep the focus on standards-based instruction. Teachers, if you haven't had a chance to sign up, you still can. We're going to have an orientation on the twenty eighth, and you'll get more information about that. So we're excited about our SEL Mental Health District Team this year. We have a brand new social worker and three foster youth counselors this year. So they're already visible at the sites. I seen them all week helping our babies, especially our young ones, adjust to, you know, starting school after a long summer or just for the first time. But we are very excited for them, and I look forward to sharing more and introducing them to you through the year. I want to give a thank you to our AYA and the Millionaire Mind Kids for starting the year off strong for our after-school programs. It's important, and the kids love those programs, and they look forward to those after school. We're sending several teachers next week from the middle schools, teachers and a few staff members learning about esports. So we're looking to implement that in a competitive level with other schools across the county. So we're going to look forward to giving you more information about that. And then while I'm helping to implement human resources, we've already begun taking a daily account of students, adjusting classes, making sure we move kids a little bit from here to there. We're monitoring that closely. I want to thank Dana for helping me to stay on track with that. But I also want to give a huge shout out to our enrollment services team, who've worked tremendously hard. If you've been anywhere near the district office, you probably couldn't find a parking space the last few weeks. But they've done a tremendous job, restructured everything to make sure that we have high levels of customer service and make sure our kids are in school quicker and more efficiently. So I'm glad Mr. Kraus mentioned about the, what are we doing with the students who we haven't received yet? So we do daily calls home, we have automated calls from our ARI system, we do home visits, we have social media, we have Parents Square posts and communications, we have attendance verifier calls, and then we do office, district office check-ins and visits. So I just want to say that we're working to make sure that all of our students come back and we communicate with our families. I also want to give a shout out to our district nurse, Lindsay. She starts the year very busy, immunizations, T-DAPS, home hospital, health screenings, and Julie helps her out, and so hearing and vision screening. So we are all off to a tremendous start. I also want to acknowledge our new special ed director, Mrs. Guthrie. She's jumped right in. We're transferring to SAES, which is a new special education database, which tracks our IEPs. So we're working with our SOPA. And I want to thank our admin teachers and staff in advance. We're still working on the transition with our local SOPA, but you have our promise that we're going to work together to make sure this is a smooth transition as possible. And then finally, we're preparing for a visit from CDE for our early literacy support block grant sites, which are Westside Park at Adelanto Elementary and El Mirage on September thirteenth and fourteenth. So they're going to be coming, checking our progress in early literacy systems and structures. So we're excited to show off our campuses and what we've been working on. For the certificated HR side, again, I just want to thank the staff for helping me as I held them. Ededy, Dana, and Kimberly mostly, but the entire team has been phenomenal. So far, we've hired forty three certificated positions as of today for the twenty three, twenty four school year. They've attended a community circle, men in early childhood education, hosted by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, hosted a substitute teacher welcome back event that eighty eight substitute teachers attended this year. And then they also hosted a two-day new hire orientation in collaboration with ADTA payroll. We have colleges, student services, curriculum, and new hires also had time spent making connections with their admin teams where they could go over expectations and standards. They joined them for lunch on those two days. And then lastly, they got an overview of PBIS and SEL. So again, making sure we focus on the whole child. Overall, just personally, I just wanted to thank every administrator, teacher, student, classified, certificated parent, community, anybody who we've seen along this first week who contributed to a successful opening of the school year. I saw a positive start to the school year, and I know that it's going to continue. Thank you.
Moving on to section four. Oh, no. Yes. No, four point zero one. Staff reports and presentations.
Yes, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We are excited to ask she goes by Farmer Anna to come up to the podium along with Julie Nichols, our director of CNS, to give us an update. So we get a lot of our produce, you'll learn about in a moment, from this farm and Farmer Anna and her family that have really helped out with giving us a local produce. And so you know, they grow a lot of oranges down there, and I don't know if the board knows this or not, but why are oranges the smartest fruit? Does anybody know why oranges are the smartest fruit?
Kind of like a question.
Well, oranges are the smartest fruit because they can concentrate. Get it? Concentrate. So, you know.
Wah, wah, wah.
But Farmer Anna is getting set up, and she does have some samples of fruit for the board this evening. So here are some fresh blackberries from the farm. The farm is down in Redlands. She'll tell you a little bit more about it here in a moment, but wanted to give you some fresh blackberries. So you get eggs and blackberries tonight. I don't know if they go, I don't know if they go together, but they, you know.
Both breakfast foods.
Oh, there you go.
One of the things I wanted to mention is these blackberries that are here before you, they are organic, no spray, regenerative, and they are the exact same blackberries that every kid in this district got to have last week. We made our delivery last Monday, and this is what your kids get to eat in their breakfast and in their lunches. And so I wanted you guys to also have a taste. Oh. They're huge. Audience members, they are literally the size of your thumb. They are juicy. I picked them today, and so they are a little bit sunwarmed. And so I hope you enjoy them, and I hope that your kids enjoy them. My name is Farmer Anna, and I am a fifth generation farmer. My farm is in Redlands, so it's about sixty miles southeast of here. And while I am humbled to be before the board today, I am also so honored to be speaking to you and to be able to engage with the AESD community at large. I'm here today because your child nutrition director, Julie Nichols, has been a huge supporter of farmers in the inland empire. And we've been collaborating together for several years and across two generations. Farmer Bob started with Julie years ago. I'm his daughter, Farmer Anna. We've been working for two generations with you all on something called Farm to School. Can anyone raise their hand if they've heard of Farm to School before? Okay, I see a few hands. Farm to School, for those of you who don't know, I am so glad that I get to tell you about it. Farm to School is designed to serve two populations, local farmers and your students. It serves your students because your kids are getting the most delicious and most nutritious produce they can get. The relationship between picking and harvest time versus nutritional content and taste is exponential. So if you want the yummiest peach ever, you have to eat a peach that was just picked. And it's not just flavor and cultivating your kid's palate, it actually impacts the nutritional value too. So when you buy local, you are getting the highest quality produce you can to your kids. The second group of people that Farm to School really helps are farmers. Okay? We're going to talk a little bit today about how farmers in San Bernardino County are struggling and about how your school district and Director Nichols specifically is really supporting these farmers and helping us stay alive. So we're going to talk about a few things today. I have about ten minutes, and I'm so excited to share this with you. Okay, first thing. This is me. My farm is called Old Grove Orange, and Old Grove Orange is both the name of our fifth generation farm, but also a food hub. A food hub is essentially an alliance of multiple farms that share and pick, share a pick and pack crew. They share cold storage, they share a delivery fleet, because a lot of small farmers can't afford those things. And so when you work with us, you might just see me, but there are actually twenty farming families in San Bernardino County and in Riverside County that are growing the fruits and vegetables for your kids. This is what our core team looks like right now. And this is what I used to look like. When I was growing up, I picked and packed oranges and sold them at farmers markets. So by the time I was eighteen, I wanted nothing, nothing to do with farming. So I moved to New York City, and I became an investment banker, and I worked in Tokyo and Hong Kong. This is the tradition on my farm. You're supposed to have a different career first. And if you really want to be a farmer, and if you really want to be in agriculture, then you come home. And I came home during the pandemic, because this is my calling. Before me, there was Farmer Bob and his siblings. He's right there in the middle. Behind him are kiwis. So out in Redlands was the southernmost, we were the southernmost growers of kiwis in California. But climate change impacts farmers first. Kiwis can't grow without a certain number of chill hours, because there are male and female trees. And so we had to rip out our kiwis about ten years ago, and we planted blackberries instead. Farmers always have to adapt in order to stay alive. And so this is one of the key ways we changed. This is Farmer Bob when he was a kid, and these are the groves right in front of my home. I live in my grandparents' home. My parents are my neighbors. They live in my great-grandparents' home. The next photo is of my grandpa. And the last photo that didn't come up is a photo of my great-great-grandpa. So five generations, we've been in Redland since the eighteen eighties. I bring this up because San Bernardino County is very special. When you've driven down in the valley before, through LA, through Orange County, if you're from this area, you remember a time where it was orange groves as far as the eye could see. If you're down there now, you won't see a single one. Orange County is called Orange County because of the orange trees. Every city seal includes an orange tree, but we don't have any left. San Bernardino County is lucky, though, because there are still a few small farms around. Every five years, the government takes a census on how many farms are out there. And so when we compare twenty twelve to twenty seventeen, do you think there are fewer farms or greater farms than there were in twenty twelve? Fewer, fewer, fewer. You are absolutely right. Between that five-year span, fifteen percent of the farms in San Bernardino County had to close down because they Between that five-year span, fifteen percent of the farms in San Bernardino County had to close down because they couldn't stay solvent. The other kind of scary statistic is eighty percent of farms in this county generate less than fifty thousand dollars a year in sales. That doesn't include equipment, that doesn't include labor, that doesn't include seed. It doesn't include any of that. You all know how hard it is to live in Southern California and how expensive it is. When your small farmers are only making fifty K a year, it makes so much more sense to sell their land to a warehouse, to a Costco, or to a residential development, and that's how we lose farmland. The reason for this is manifold. Have you guys ever seen a vintage orange crate? Maybe, maybe not, but oranges used to be picked into this crate, and this crate fits fifty-five pounds of oranges. If you were to purchase fifty-five pounds of oranges, Nables, about two months ago, you would be paying a dollar twenty-five per pound in the supermarket. So this box would go for about seventy, seventy-five dollars. When I sell this box to a grocery store, meaning a commercial packing house, how many dollars of that seventy-five do you think that I get to keep as a farmer? Half? Less than half? Any other guesses? Twenty-five percent? Less than twenty-five percent? Less than fifteen? Less than ten?
Nothing.
I get something.
Two dollars.
I get one dollar. This seventy-five dollar, what you would pay seventy-five dollars for, I get one dollar. And that's because a commercial packing house comes to pick it. They then take those oranges, and they take the biggest, most beautiful ones, and they export them to Asia. They take the small ones or the ugly ones and turn that into juice. They then go ahead and size them, they cover them in wax, they spray boxes with fungicide so that when you transport them from point A to point B, there's no spread of disease or of mold. But they have to pay for a marketing team and a distribution team and the grocery store clerk. And when you look at all those chains, what the farmer ends up with is a dollar. We brought oranges to the Nutrition Services Warehouse yesterday, fifty-three of these. This box holds forty oranges, forty pounds of oranges, and we sell it for twenty-six dollars to you guys. How much money do you think I get to keep from this? I don't get twenty-six because I have to pay somebody to work on the farm, and I have to pay for my truck, but I get to keep fourteen. Fourteen dollars, which is amazing. That is amazing. This box is smaller than that wooden box that I showed you. We sell it to you much cheaper than what you would buy in the supermarket, yet we get to keep fourteen times more. And that's how you guys keep small farms alive. I went to school on Farm to School money. My family has been doing this. Our families have been doing this for seventeen years. I went to college because of these relationships. One of our apple farmers, his son just graduated from Harvard Law School. All of these things are possible. You are supporting families in this area through these purchases, and it makes such a difference. When we look at an Old Grove Orange, it is super, super fresh. This is Farmer Aladio. We get the order, we pick it the day before our delivery, we pack them into these boxes here, and I am the one who brings it in the truck. That is me next to that truck. And I use my experience as a child, okay? I use my driving experience to do these deliveries. This is it. There are only two links in the chain. It's the farmer, and it's the school, and it's your kids. It's your kids who get this, and so we are just so grateful that this relationship exists. I want to highlight to you. Last year, AESD spent seventy-one thousand dollars with local farmers. This is a full list of everything they bought. It includes peaches and plums and Pluats and blackberries and all kinds of different apples. These dollars are going directly to the farmers in your community and to those kids. And I want you to know, those farmers' kids go to your schools. And so we are talking about a relationship that is just like this and that is so supportive of the local economy. We are really so grateful for this relationship that we have with Director Nichols, and it is really special to us. It's not just, though, selling fruits and vegetables. What's different when you buy from your farmers versus Gold Star or Cisco is that we care about the relationship between your farmers and students. I touched on this earlier. You might see me today, Farmer Anna, but the people who grow your apples, that's Farmer Byron and his son George. The people who grow your oranges, Farmer Moises and Farmer Maria. The people who grow the Easter egg radishes that your kids got to try last year with FFEP, that's Megan. She's an organic farmer, a female farmer, and she is so good at what she does. The people who grow watermelon, Farmer Sunny and Farmer Jenny, they're Korean-American farmers. We don't choose these people based on their identity. We're not interested in identity politics. But this area is a diverse place, and so our farmers are naturally diverse people who are growing crops that are relevant and culturally relevant to your kids. So when you think about Old Grove Orange, please don't think that it's just me. There are twenty families, there are farming kids like me, and that's who you're supporting. What we're so excited about is that your kids get to engage with us. What we care about and what makes us different than a mainline distributor is that we care about the relationships. So we encourage relationships between farmers and students. Unfortunately, it has become a privilege to know the story of how your food is grown. And not everybody gets to know who it is who grows their food, how their food is grown, what went into it. But we want your kids to know. For several years, Director Nichols has had us come to do mini farmers markets. We go onto an elementary school campus, and we bring three fruits and three vegetables. We paint a picture with our words. We talk about what the farm is like, about the year-round creek on the northern side, about the railroad with forty-five trains a day that goes on the southern side, about the lambs who are natural lawn mowers, all of our weeds, all of our cover crops, sheep, eat all of that. And little chickens follow them and incorporate that sheep poop into the dirt, and it creates this really rich, beautiful place to grow healthy food. So we come and we talk about this. We talk about the superpowers of different fruits and vegetables, and your kids get to take three superpowers home with them. And it starts to pique their curiosity, and it gets tried fruits and vegetables that they never would have tried otherwise. And it's a really powerful experience. Last year, though, we wanted to kind of level it up. We asked Director Nichols to partner with us on a USDA grant in order to bring five hundred students from Adelanto Elementary to our farm on a farm field trip for free. We wanted it to be free so we can prove this as a proof of concept, so it's a pilot. Do kids like this? Do teachers like this? Is it possible? And it is. It is. The farm field trip experience looks kind of like this, where kids get to come into our crops and they try sugar snap peas picked right off the vine by themselves. They eat oranges, caracaras, blood oranges, valencias and nables sliced in one-hundred-year-old groves. They get to walk, they get to ride through our farm on a little hay wagon. And when I went through my records, I don't take photos of every trip, but when I went through my records, it turned out that I had photos of a trip that Westside Elementary did on March twenty-eighth. These three photos are your kiddos. They are the very first Adelanto Elementary kids who have ever been to the Old Grove Farm. And we have another one hundred forty from Morgan Kincaid coming in October. I'm so excited to be able to have reached this point. I don't know if you guys know, but Farm to School is at its most sexy, most spotlight time right now. But you guys have supported this effort for years, long before it was popular, long before people were talking about it. And truly, this district is on the cutting edge of Farm to School. We have thirty-five districts that we work with in the Los Angeles Basin that make weekly deliveries. Our day-one clients have been with us for fifteen years. And we have really pioneered a relationship with Nutrition Services that includes having Director Nichols' staff come out to the farm. We talk to lunch ladies and mealmen about farm-fresh produce and thank them for supporting us. But what's new? Today, I sat down with Superintendent Kraus and his whole team, and we talked about what it might be like to have the principals, your principals, come out to our farm, to have more students from Adelanto Elementary understand the story of what they're eating. What's unique about this farm is that your kids are already eating the fruits and vegetables we grow. We want to tell the story of how that food was grown. We want to introduce them to our lambs. We want them to stand by the creek and close their eyes and feel for a moment the wonder of nature and the wonder of farming. Farming is a millennia-old craft. We are the original small business people. And our philosophy isn't to control nature, it's to work with nature. When they stand by that creek, and you have seventy kids able to keep quiet, we ask, okay, well, what do you hear? And they always say, okay, birds, water. But a couple of answers in, they start to say things like calm or peace. And those are the powerful experiences we want to give your kids. So I am just so thankful and filled with humility, and I am so honored that we get to work with you guys. And I'm so happy to announce the ways in which our partnership is growing. We have a tentative schedule for having your principals come out on September sixth. And I want to use this opportunity to invite you to join us, to come see the farm for yourselves, because we appreciate your support. And I, I really want to use this platform to say thank you to Director Nichols for making this possible. Not only are your kids the beneficiaries, so are our farmers. And this is how we can keep small farmers farming forever in the Inland Empire. So thank you for being wonderful, wonderful community members.
Wow, you have taken my breath away, Mrs. Anna. I want to go. We truly appreciate the relationship that we have. And I know that our students are going to, are excited that have gone and that are, will be going. On September the sixth, I got to fill out my volunteer petition so I can go.
Yay!
However, that is wonderful. I'm so excited. Thank you. I enjoyed listening to your passion. I can see it all over. So exciting. I'll leave some time for the rest of trustees.
Well, first thing I want to say, thank you so much. I am enlightened. You, you got me in your tears. Girl, that's how much your passion moves. I did not know. I learned so much, and I do appreciate what our farm, farmers do. The, the struggles are decades, generations, you hear about it. You know, there, there was a farm up in Apple Valley that did corn, and they did pumpkins, and they had a corn maze, and they closed down.
Yeah.
And, you know, I remember I moved to the area in the early nineties, and there were way more orange trees. Now you see little slivers, and it's really important, you know. We, there's so many people who think, well, you just go to the grocery store. It's like, no, there's more involved. And the fact that this is in our district, first thing, I'm so proud. And I'm so appreciative to our director, to this. I mean, it's like you're mad, mad gen, gen, geniuses, you know, and I truly appreciate it so much.
Thank you for saying that.
It's just really is wonderful. I'm just, you got me. You got me.
You know, your comment just reminds me, some people think that oranges can be picked mechanically, that if you shake the tree and then pick up the orange, like almonds or pistachios, you cannot do that with an orange tree. You will kill the tree if you do that. So every orange that you have ever eaten, every orange that your kids eat, someone has picked that by hand and prepared that and packed that to be with you. And we lose sight of that when we don't know who our farmers are.
Yeah, so I just, I truly appreciate all that the farm, farmers do. So thank, thank you.
Trustee Webster?
Alrighty, good evening. Thank you so much for being with us and sharing your passion with our board. I completely agree with you, being, growing up with the amount of family who does, do have farms. My brother has massive acres in Lodi, my uncle in Porterville. You are a thousand percent correct. That experience of learning how things are grown and brought to our tables is something unimaginable. I look forward to seeing more field trips out to your farms, and I look forward to seeing more of you. So thank you again for being here with us.
Pleasure.
And drive safe.
Thank you for this time.
Trustee Turner?
Farmer Anna, your presentation was amazing. Your, your excitement, your passion for what you do. I'm glad that you left New York and came back home. Fresh fruit is so important. It really is. I'm looking at these blue blackberries, and I've never seen anything like this. And for our children to be getting fresh, organic fruit is, it warms my heart. I mean, because there's so much junk out there they're eating, and to get fresh fruit that's good for their bodies, their soul, their mind, their thinking is absolutely incredible, and I hope that our, our partnership with you lasts forever.
Likewise, it is really the leadership of this district that makes that possible, and so we are just full of thanks.
And, you know, you mentioned oranges. My son had, and he moved and sold his home. I hate that. He had the best oranges and the best lemons that you could ever eat. And then I had to start buying them at the grocery store, and it's, it's night and day. The fruit is night and day.
Was he local? Was he from, was his home around here?
Actually, he's in Tarzana.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, they have a lot of fruit trees out there, and it's just incredible that we're able to partner with you. I wish that you made more money than a dollar. That's a little depressing, so you got to do better than that.
You help us make more than a dollar.
Well, thank you again. I, I'm looking forward to seeing more of you, and I'm going to try to make that field trip on the sixth of September. And keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Soto, would you like to chime in?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Excellent presentation. Love your energy and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, thank you very much for this time, Superintendent Kraus, Dr. Drazin, Director Nichols. And thank you to you all. I am just so happy to see your faces and to see you not alone, and I really appreciate you as community members. So thank you for supporting your local farms.
Thank you. She grew those too?
Yes, she does.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, the section five, closed session declaration. We will be taking items five point zero two through five point zero four into closed session. Moving along to six point zero one, the Declaration before closed session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point of the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting dialogue, open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers for ADTA?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Jennifer Rader to the podium, please.
Uh, thank you very much. A quick word about the eggs. Be sure to wash them before you use them. And you just might want to give them the float test. Every so often, there's a stinker. So just if they sink, they're good. If they float, out. All right, good evening, Superintendent Kraus, Madam President, Honored Trustees, Cabinet, and all those attending in person or on Zoom. Well, seven days in and it's like the proverbial roller coaster ride, highs and lows all around. Let's begin with a few positive notes. This came from a teacher at TedVic. My new classroom was the cleanest I have ever come back to. I have had great attendance this week. I got all the supplies I needed for my students' personal use and our new teachers are awesome. I've seen at least one admin in the NPR during my class's lunch all week. Our math books are back to one book instead of eleven or twelve. IT has been solving my issues quickly. Our new day custodian responds quickly to my requests and music starts this week. I can report from MKP that we are experiencing far less transciency as it seems as though the vast majority of our students have continued with us from year to year and are not transferring out. Our administrators are visible every morning and at lunch and recess, and that sets an excellent tone for the students. Our night custodians are doing a terrific job and my room was sparkling clean when I arrived as well. I know that initially we had not ordered the year turn workbooks for the winter's curriculum, but that was quickly rectified. Some campuses enjoyed a nice continental breakfast or lunch provided by administrators or PTSA, but some did not. And some did not even get their basic supplies. Being provided with goodies goes a long way toward making us feel appreciated. However, I am pretty sure most teachers would rather have plenty of supplies, reliable copiers, and adequate technical support all the time. The kinds of problems that should have been worked out during the summer. Copiers maintained, toner replaced, paper supply laid in, technology in the classrooms checked for sound and accessibility, projectors working properly, reliable printers, again, full of toner for the start of the year, full Chrome cards, operational and with up-to-date charging stations. Some classes are over the enrollment cap. And now I recognize that for two weeks, there will be some shuffling of teachers and students while the warm body count stabilizes. But as soon as possible, overages should be rectified. At some schools, there is room in a twenty-four to one class. Yet another has a roster of more than twenty-four and it's not immediately rectified. Just because you have two weeks to handle all those changes doesn't mean you wait until the last day to make the changes. These kids are already connecting with a teacher. The sooner they can be placed in the right class, the better off they are. Another problem with having extra students at the beginning of the year is that we do not have the supplies for those students. With the copiers not working, teachers cannot even make packets. These kids are being taught from the moment they step in our classes, behaviors, procedures, reviewing skills, and even early assessments to better serve them. Teachers deserve some help for this. Maybe we can revisit the idea of compensation for the overages in the beginning of the year. And maybe that would encourage the powers that be to stabilize our class sizes as soon as possible. The biggest problem looming currently in the district is the lack of Chromebooks. Some classes do not have a full set of Chromebooks, and this is a huge step backward for the district. They get lost or are broken or are just outdated and can't be supported by Google. But this is an ongoing expense that cannot be spared. Like it or not, Chromebooks need to be replenished, almost like a consumable. It's asinine that we trusted these kids to take home these Chromebooks for the last three years and now they suddenly are not being allowed to take them home. Our librarians are contradicting our administrators who have told us that students will have a Chromebook for school and one to go home. If this is the case, the information should come to us from the principals, not the librarian. Most of the libraries across the district are still closed as textbooks and Chromebooks are distributed. So the kids have no books and we've taken away their ability to use Myon or Epic. We push for our kids to read and take AR quizzes, but we've taken away a huge tool for them to read. We know most of our students don't have computers at home, yet we take away their only access to class while outside of school. We've been encouraged and almost forced to go as digital as possible and to use Google Classroom as well as our online curriculum, yet the students can't use it to access it outside of school day. Students and parents have gotten used to messaging us with questions and concerns. They are used to being able to access things like video tutorials. We have all of these online programs, Lexia, IXL, Happy Numbers, Reflex, the list goes on. And we often ask struggling students to use these outside of school to practice. And then the district decides they can't have their Chromebooks at home. It makes no sense. I wonder if, when our science curriculum is all online and the students don't each have a Chromebook, if that constitutes a Williams Act violation. And speaking of the technology we need, we need headphones for each child. Lexia is an auditory output model and requires listening capability. Some of our children qualify to have the Myon stories read out loud to them. All of this is, I'm sorry, all of this is short circuited if we have no headphones. This is a problem across the district and speaks again to preparation for the new school year. No one should be surprised at the beginning of the school year that we need a full set of all the equipment and supplies. Why then does this take so long? We work really hard with the kids to teach them to treat the equipment with care, understanding that they are not easy to replace. Some kids are harder on the equipment than others, but we need to be able to provide the headphones to all students regardless. Some teachers in the past have purchased headphones themselves out of desperation. This has to stop. Let's consider how we can be premier in the high desert, not just following along behind Victor L. or Hesperia. Let's be the district that gives the students a Chromebook for class and one for home. I still have much more to share with you tonight, so I will be availing myself of the second speaking opportunity. Please stay tuned for more. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone for CSEA?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Diane Lynn to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, La French, trustees, Superintendent Mr. Kraus, Cabinet, Classified Staff, Certificated Staff, and all others attending this meeting in person and via Zoom. I would like to start by saying we had a very smooth first day at George Magnet. Our parents were happy. Our students were excited. I have to admit, we had a couple of crying kinders, but our admin and staff were able to handle the situations with nurturing care and professionalism. On another note, I would like to touch on the subject of transportation. The main issue being communication. I have to emphasize again, communication. I totally understand the need for bus passes. However, if our transportation committee had been formed, I truly believe we could have been prepared to handle the new procedures. Our school's office staff were not informed of the decision that were made. Specifically, the applications needed for our students' bus passes. It truly caused chaos for our classified staff and our parents. I want to thank Mr. Kraus for waiving the passes for a few weeks. I believe we can collaborate and get this procedure in place. One item I have suggested is having each bus have a folder with all the bus routes. So if there is a change, meaning with the sub-driver or a different bus, the information would be right there at the driver's fingertips. I'm hoping we can create our committee sooner than later so we can get the proper procedures in place and in a timely manner. I'm hoping that we have a great year for negotiations and thank you. Thank you all for having me here and able to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, we have an audience members.
Madam President, we do not for a closed session. Thank you.
Moving right along to section seven, recess to closed session. Trustees, can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
Turner, I motion that we recess to closed session.
May I get a second?
Ben, second.
Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed five zero. The time is six thirty-one. We're in closed session. Thank you. The time is eight twenty-one. Ms. LeVey, please call to order. Roll call, please.
Madam President, I do want to say that Trustee Soto left the meeting at seven thirty-four PM. I'll go ahead and I'll take roll call. Trustee Benz.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present. Form is established. Moving on to nine, closed session report. We have nothing to report out. Ten, public testimony. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers? Anyone from ADTA?
Madam President, we'd like to see if Ms. Rader would come back up to the podium. I believe based on her comments earlier, she would like to come back.
There are a number of other concerns I'd like to bring before you. We still have long-term subs in combo classes and students in combo classes that were already in a combo class. And it's a general rule that once a child has been in a combination class, they aren't assigned to that again. Here's an awkward one. Some teachers, when they leave their classrooms and they go to a different location or they might retire or they quit or whatever, they've left a mess in their classroom. The closets are full of junk. It's this huge mess that the next teacher has to come and clean out. We need to have some kind of protocol. This is not a contract issue. This is a procedural issue. And there should be some way that they can have all of their mess, every single one of us to come into a classroom, to move into a classroom, and we found tons of junk from the person before. So that's been a bit of a problem too. Teachers moving from one room to another or from one grade level to another get no compensation for working on this during their time off. And so their classrooms, they try and get their classrooms ready for that very first day and they spend a lot of extra time doing that. There's no provision for some compensation for that time. Some schools have reported unsafe classrooms, rodent droppings, holes in the wall that you can see all the way through the outside where I guess rats or mice have chewed. All playgrounds are still not open in the district. I know at least one school with a broken slide on the large monster, the large climbing equipment. All of last year, we had the play equipment cordoned off at every site. And here's another thing that should be handled during the summer or during a break. And I'm not even sure that all the playgrounds are open yet. Somewhere, a student was put in a classroom. The student had a severe medical condition and the teacher was not informed. We are still concerned about the protocol. If a student threatens to shoot us or shoot classmates, this happens more than you would believe and our collective concerns are not taken seriously. In room eight oh two at TedVic, Mr. Kraus found that the water fountain had ants coming out of it. This was early August. A work order has been put in. It's bagged off, but it's still not fixed. Eagle Ranch has been without any phones, internet, or copiers at all this entire year so far. A whole week, week and two days, but it's probably most important week and two days to have internet, phone, and copiers. We need to hire principals and assistant principals. We need to hire a CBO. We need to hire an HR director. We need to hire more bus drivers. We need to expand our IT department. Rome is burning and Nero is fiddling. It, it can seem like things are going well and then it's just not, that things are, things have to happen. It's, to me, it feels like it's crumbling a little bit. We need to have these things handled right away. I've spoken with most of you enough to know that you deeply value education and desire Adelanto to be the best district possible. I'm asking you therefore to stop being reactionary and instead be proactive. Let's consider how we can be premier in the high desert, not just following along behind Victor L. and Hesperia. Let's be the district that has every job filled. Let's be the district with the best technology for the kids. Let's be the district where we allow the teachers the freedom to teach instead of shackling with more requirements and forced strategies. Let's remember that our teachers' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. Let's lead the desert in salary and benefits. I'm going to close with a quote from Sidney Hook. Everyone who remembers his own education remembers teachers, not methods or techniques. The teacher is the heart of educational system. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Duran, do you see anyone on Zoom for CSEA this evening?
No one on Zoom, no.
Okay, Madam President, we do have a golden rod for a speaker that's here with us this evening. We'd like to call and Dr. Richard McKinney or Ricardo McKinney. I do apologize, sir.
It's been on and connected all evening and when I come up here, it disconnects. Good evening, board members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to introduce myself and Project Recreation to you. Disclaimer, I'm visually impaired, so I need to take my glasses off and hold things kind of close so I can read. My name is Dr. Rick McKinney Jr. I'm an educator, excuse me, I'm the Executive Director of West Coast Edutainment Incorporated and a high desert resident since two thousand and four. Our foster youth, homeless, socio-economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and others are at critical levels of performance in English Language Arts, Math, Absenteeism, and Suspension. AESD's goal one is to increase students' academic achievement. Goal two is to provide students with the behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health supports they need. Project Recreation is an intervention program that helps youth acquire social, emotional, life, English Language Arts, and transition skills. Project Recreation's twelve lessons are entertaining and engaging. And one of the entertaining and engaging aspects of it is this music and you guys heard a little bit of it. We wrote twelve original hip-hop songs to teach the lessons. We shot forty-five original videos and created projects, activities, and discussion questions to use as educational tools. We start our program helping youth set life and purpose in We start our program helping youth set life and purpose in life, excuse me, lifestyle and purpose in life goals. Then we help them believe in themselves, figure out how to motivate themselves, how to deal with tragedies, how to put their resources together, how to perceive things in a helpful way, how to deal with the characteristics of a good friend, incorporating that for themselves and finding it in others. We teach them how to perform self-emotional and cognitive surgery, basically using a strategy or a method of cognitive therapy. And we also teach them how to deal with systems, educational system and other systems that exist in our society. With Project Recreation, youth are engaged as a primary agent in charge of their education, life goals, and success. Project Recreation can change students' lives, families, school culture, and climate, and community. I'm a certified special ed teacher with twenty-seven years of experience. My master's and doctoral degrees are in special education and psychology. I'm putting together a growing team of retired teachers and administrators. I have one of the math teachers, administrators here with me, Larry, Mr. Lewis, sorry. So Project Recreation program material has been reviewed and approved by the California Department of Education and the San Diego County Superintendent of Schools. The program has been conducted eight times, yielding positive results. The Academy of Academic Excellence wants to continue working with us this school year after a successful summer program. We'd like to provide another tool to help A E S D reach its goals. I want to give you guys a sample of a lesson, music videos, and a bit more information about Project Recreation. I began communicating with administration in the district and look forward to working with you. I appreciate any suggestions and help you can provide. Thank you for your time, and I'll think I'll leave stuff right here. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kraus, do we have anyone else?
Madam President, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to section eleven, adoption of the minutes. Eleven point zero one. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve as written the order filed regular board meeting minutes of July the eleventh?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve, to adopt the minutes.
Bensai sec- second.
Ms. LeVay, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section twelve, consent agenda. We're taking items twelve point zero two through twelve point five seven. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
I have none.
Thank you, Benz.
Can I please pull twelve point two nine?
Twelve point two nine.
I'm sorry, I did have one. I'm sorry.
And twelve point three four.
Twelve point what?
Three four.
Three four?
Yeah.
Uh, twelve point five.
I'm sorry, Benz.
Twelve point four five.
Trustee Turner.
I have none.
Thank you. Can I get consent to?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I do have one. Twelve point five two.
Can I get consent to approve the rest of the agenda?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve the consent agenda, mine, minus twelve point four five, twelve point five two. What were the other ones?
Twelve point three four.
Twelve point two nine.
Twelve point two nine. Twelve point three four, twelve point two nine, right? Okay. So that's my mo- motion is to approve the remain meeting.
Webster, I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote, Ms. LeVay.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section thirteen, items removed from the consent agenda, agenda. Item twelve point two nine. Open for discussion. A motion to open it.
Webster, I motion to open twelve point two nine for for approval and discussion.
Benzai sec. Benzai sec- second.
Ms. LeVay, please call for the vote.
No.
So I did have inquiry about this. I always kind of get a little antsy when I see ratification, but also with our San Bernardino County District associates, I was just hoping maybe someone in cabinet can speak to this for me.
Yes, thank you, trustee Webster, for the question. So on twelve twenty-nine, and I know that you also pulled twelve thirty-four, they're both with the county of San Bernardino, but what happens is is that every year we have renewal agreements for different things. So for example, twelve twenty-nine is for Sandabs. It's an organization that we have been members of for quite some time. However, we have, we do not control when they get us the contracts. So the contracts for the county are always dated July first, which starts their fiscal year, our fiscal year. I know Dr. Dweizler and I have been having conversations with the county on letting them know our process as a district that our board prefers to get them dated the day after, like all the other contracts that we do of the board meetings. So for example, we would have, we asked them to date this August sixteenth if it were approved this evening. However, at this time, with a lot of their contracts for all districts, not including ours, they will not budge on the July first. So since it says July first, and we're proving it in August, and we get them August, September, October, the board will see them dated July first, but it's sort of out of our control, but we're really having those conversations with them to see if they can get those contracts to us sooner and potentially date them the day after our board meetings.
All right, thank you.
I do have a quick question. So what is the perp- purpose of Sandabs?
Trustee Benz, great question, and I know that Ms. LeVay down there on the end is very familiar with Sandabs. She works with the board and the county on it, but basically it's an organization that, and Ms. LeVay, correct me if I'm wrong, it's an organization that advocates at the state level for issues pertaining to San Bernardino County that are legislative or related to legislation in the Assembly, the Senate, yeah, coming out of the governor's office. But basically, school districts are members of this advocacy committee, and they advocate on behalf of education in general and for San Bernardino County specifically.
Do we have to be a part of this group?
Ms. LeVay, as far as I know, we've been a part of them for a long time, and it's a requirement.
Forever, and all school districts have them. Yeah, some type of protection, but it is a subscription that we do sign up for every year. And unfortunately, this is one of San Bernardino's contracts that we really struggle with trying to get them to change the dates to so that we don't have to ratify. So it is something that we're working on.
So how have we been benefited from Sandabs? Just asking.
That's a great question, trustee Benz. I do know that they have regular meetings that board members are more than welcome to attend as the legislative bodies of school districts. They do have agendas. They do advocate for issues up in Sacramento. So at the broad level, that's how they're advocating for what specifically is in San Bernardino County, not necessarily like Riverside or Orange County or any of the other counties, but if you have concerns, they have a committee that you can reach out to as a board member about the, the way education is going in San Bernardino County. So for instance, say you have a concern that the state is putting out, the state superintendent is putting out a concern on something. You can reach out to the lobbyist at Sandabs, basically the lobbyists that go to Sacramento and say, in San Bernardino County, we have some board members or school districts that have concerns or questions about X, Y, or Z. And then they get answers and bring them back. And so as board members, you have that ability to do that. We will make sure, Ms. LeVay, that we get all the board members, the contact information of the Sandabs Committee, who sits on that, and then you're able to reach out and actually converse with them one-on-one. But they're your legislative advocates in Sacramento for San Bernardino County School Boards.
Okay, thank, thank you for explaining, splitting that, and yes, I would like that in. Thank, thank you.
I have no questions.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
Your mic is off.
Can I get a motion to approve twelve point three four?
Webster, I motion to approve twelve point three four.
Can I get a second?
Turner, I second.
We're now open for discussion.
Following additionally with the prior one, I wanted to pull with the ratification explanation. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Kraus for being thorough on the first agenda item. As that is all of what I have for discussion.
Benz?
I have none.
Trustee Turner?
I have none.
Ms. LeVay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four zero. Can I get a motion to approve twelve point four five?
Benz, and I mo- motion to approve twelve point four five.
Webster, I second.
We're open for discussion.
Okay, I pulled this because I really like to wel- welcome when we have a new hi- hire. I am very, very, very excited to well-welcome Ms. Turnipseed. She is just, I wish I was a student at her school now because she really does care, and it's, I'm very thrilled and excited to have you on board once we vote, so, you know.
You know, I do want to take a moment and say that I have appreciated your work in the last six months and the dedication you have made to our students as a sub. I cannot wait to see the entire potential you have moving forward after vote. So I do want to say thank you so much for being part of our A E S D family, and I do look for many of yours working with you.
Mr. Turner?
I concur with my fellow trustees. Every time I see you, Ms. Turnipseed, you have a big smile on your face. And students see that smile and that, you know, our, our model for this year, cultivate creative kindness, and I know that Mason Linda is getting an amazing person to help grow our children because that's greatly needed. And so welcome, thank you for all you do, all you've done for the past six months and with the vote, and I'm sure it's going to be a positive vote, so welcome aboard. Thank you.
I want to say thank you, talking with you and hearing your passion for our children and our staff. I'm excited. I am excited for Mason Linda. I am. Thank you for being here. Thank you for continuing to stay with us, and I appreciate you. Thank you. I appreciate your spirit. I appreciate that smile. You know, I'm excited for Mason Linda. I'm excited. And you know, people always say that smiles are contagious, and they are. I love to smile, love to smile, because when you smile at someone, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they smile back. It's a wonderful thing to see that smile. Thank you. They're going to enjoy you over there. They are.
Ms. LeVay, could you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four zero.
Would you like to stand?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Can I get a motion to approve twelve, twelve point five two?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve twelve point five two.
Turner, I second.
We're open for discussion.
Okay, so I pulled this one, too, because I just, this is like my little thing that I like to do. Sorry, I meant to. I'm sorry, my bad.
Trustee Benz did motion, but trustee Turner actually pulled.
She beat me to, to, to the punch.
Well, go ahead. You started. Go ahead, trustee.
Well, the board wanted this pulled because we do like to well-welcome those that, that, you know, get, get, will get the position, position, esp- especially when the can- can't candidate has made such, such a pos- positive in impact. So we just, that's one of the bright, bright sides of the job.
I just want to extend my excitement for Evelyn. I appreciate when I come up to get anything that I need for the board. There's always a smiling face sitting right there. I appreciate how amazing you make my daughter feel comfortable when I have to step into those awkward meetings. So I'm just thankful that you're part of this team, and I look forward to even more. So thank you.
Trustee Turner? Wait, because later it gets the more.
Evelyn, you know, you've worked with our sister Z for a number of months now, and you know, I don't know how she did it without you. She's absolutely amazing, and so are you. So this opportunity that is presented tonight is a step, a step ahead, and I'm so happy that you are the person that will be fulfilling that job. So congratulations.
I'm here to say congratulations, and while we have to vote, we always do that. Anyway, I enjoy having candy with you. You know, we have that candy that time that somebody just like tore the candy box up and gave it to us. Uh huh, there's little, what else did I want to say? I want to say I enjoy the fact that every time that I do come to the district that you're professional. I enjoy your smile. It's always really quiet over there. You're always there to help and assist. I come, I have bags with all kinds of stuff. I'm trying to put stuff here, put stuff there. I appreciate your help. I do.
Ms. LeVay, call for the vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benzai.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four zero. Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, fourteen point zero one. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the amendment and the agreement with Project Support Services for Division of State Architects, D S A, to support the completion of Phase Two project closeout for Project A number zero four dash five one six two eight for Adelanto Elementary School and West Side Park School.
Webster, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
Open for discussion?
Can, can we just get just a little bit of layman terms, like back, background on what this, this is, please?
Yes, absolutely. Trustee Benz, thank you for your question. And what we found uh several months ago, almost a year ago, is that uh over the last twenty years, there were projects in the district, construction projects that were not fully closed out with Division of State Architects. That's who's has the final say so and has to sign off on projects. So there was about nine or ten projects that we needed to close out because they were outstanding. For example, if they were at a school site and the plans weren't signed off on and something happened, we could be liable. And so we needed the Division of State Architects to come in, uh see uh what, what had been done ten, fifteen years ago, if it was brought up to code, or if we needed to do something to bring it up to code. So Project Support Services has been assisting us with closing out our construction projects that should have been closed out many years ago. And so this is the last phase of that. And as they work through this, there were some other things that Division of State Architects required. So we needed to extend their contract and add a few more dollars to that. It's coming out of facilities money in order to close out these projects.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, motion pass four zero.
Moving on to fourteen point zero two, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the A E S D Injury and Illness Prevention Program? Um COVID slash nineteen amendment?
Webster, I motion to approve.
We're open for discussion.
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Webster was first and you were.
I have a first by Webster and a second by Turner.
Okay, okay. I, I didn't have my mic on.
Any discussion?
I have none.
Hearing none, call for the vote, Z.
Trustee Webster?
I said Z LeVey. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to fourteen point zero three. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the field trip settlement agreement with the California School Employee Association?
Turner, I motion to approve.
Webster, I seconds.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to fourteen point zero four. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the employment of certificated personnel on basis of a short-term staff permit?
Turner, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section fifteen, policy introduction, updates and readings. Fifteen point zero one, trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Board Policy twenty-five, twenty-three for electronic records and electronic signatures?
Madam President, correction, it's policy thirty-five, twenty-three.
Thirty, what did I say?
Twenty-five, twenty-three.
I see. Okay, thirty-five, I, I know a three when I see it. I don't have glasses on because I don't like to wear it. Thirty-five, twenty-three, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, motion to approve.
Webster, I second.
We're now open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section fifteen point zero two. Trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Administrative Regulation thirty-five, twenty-three? For elec- is this the same thing?
Yes, it is.
For electronic records and electronic signatures.
Webster, I motion to approve.
Turner, I second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to sixteen, governing board members' reports and announcements.
I got mine typed out.
Trustee Webster?
Oh, you're gonna put me on spot. All right, let's do this. Good evening, A E S D friends and family. I want to say a special welcome back to all our staff. And I know last week was hectic. And there is an abundance of work that goes into learning the routines, the kids, leveling, leveling classes and making sure everyone is where they need to be. I want to thank our staff for such a great first week. As we embarked on a new school year, something we saw a lot of was the support of all staff, including D O staff out lending a hand. It's amazing to see the connections being grown, the communication being had, and the teamwork for our children. I was present at the welcome back we had on August second. It was great to see many faces after the summer. I had the pleasure of walking with Dr. Doyz on while each site met together in classrooms. It was impressive to see how big and small some of our site teams are, and the collaboration going on was inspiring. We are never going to fix everything in a day, but together we can continually improve and innovate. This comes when we collectively can be comfortable with each other, be vulnerable enough to share our ideas and build upon those ideas as strength comes in numbers. It has come to my attention recently that there are those who may not have the same focus as myself. Some go as far to make assumptions against my demeanor, my professionalism, and flat-out trying to degrade me. And I want to say I was deeply disappointed that certain individuals could be so malicious. But I believe firmly that in life, there will be those who fear what they don't understand and hate that which they cannot conquer. I know personally, I like to be a positive person. I try to keep myself optimistic and appreciate those things that at times go unnoticed. And I know I will never be everyone's cup of tea. I'm a single mother with two jobs and I help take care of my parent. I'm a mother who drops her child off at school every morning and picks her up every night. A child you will find with me most of the time if she's not in school. I'm responsible for homework, dinner, bath time and bedtime. And many nights having to catch up on any work required for the district after tucking my little one in. I try to take my time to listen to every concern or need at a department, employee, or district level. I never came here to pick a team, take a stance, and advocate for just one thing. Change is something that is hard, especially when history has looked the same for so long. We know that we can't stand, we can't stand the old days with the same tactics, arguments, and ongoing conflicts. And we can't completely erase the method, methods that have worked for decades. It is up to us to come together with the best intentions and interests for our district with respect for one another. We have the ability to co- overcome anything. Additionally, tonight, I want to take a moment and say congratulations to Mr. Kraus for being recognized in your magazine as a person to watch. That is quite an achievement. And lastly, I want to finish my comments with a very, very special shout out to our board president as she will be celebrating that beautiful birthday tomorrow. So if we could all get around and applause, I would greatly appreciate it for our birthday girl. Thank you and all have a great night.
Thank you. Glad I don't have to come behind that. Let's see, who wants that?
You better go look the, the, the other way.
And come behind, that's right there. Trustee Turner?
Okay. Well said, Trustee Webster. Very well said. Um I would like to say welcome back to another school year and welcome back to our parents, our students, our administrators, our I T department, which is very important. Certified classified staff and our superintendent, cabinet, and our administrative assistants, everyone that played an integral part in getting us ready for the beginning of the school year. Our district model this year is cultivate creative kindness. Those are some powerful words. Kindness go a long ways and words hurt. And they can also make you feel better. But once you say something that is not nice and that come out of your mouth, you can't take that back. You know, words can cut deeper than a knife. I'm happy that Mr. Kraus introduced that theme. How people feel every day coming to work, going home, basic life adventures, and now more than ever, it's very important that we exhibit kindness, compassion, healthfulness, thoughtfulness, and love to each other. What is a rumor mill? Hmm. Most are lies made up about someone's character or actions. Currently, there are a lot of ugly, ugly rumors plaguing our district which are now moving outside of our district, which I got wind of the other day. I would just like to say that we as adults need to control those things. Our children are listening to us and they're looking at us. And that is not the picture that we want to portray to our children and expect them to behave a different way. If there's a question that you have about someone, the best thing to do is go ask that person. They can give you all the information that you need if it pertains to them. And I recommend that you do that. Kindness, healthfulness, compassion is what we should be striving for. That will make our lives easier, our jobs easier, and our health a lot better. I would just like to say that in this world today, you know, there's a lot of ugliness happening around us. And A E S D as a family, we call ourselves family. I know that things may not always go the way that we plan for them to go. But we need to work together and create that and cultivate that creative kindness with each other. Moving on on another note, I attended the back-to-school breakfast, lunch event, which was very, very nice. And I have to say that those words, creative kindness, was in that room and it was very, very nice. I would also like to thank Assemblyman Juan Carrillo for attending that breakfast. He, he took some time out of his schedule to attend and gave some warm words and I really appreciate that. I'm excited about some upcoming changes in our departments uh and our school sites as far as test results. We haven't got the results back yet, but I'm looking forward to seeing those results soon. Because I'm sure that we're headed in the right direction and I'm looking forward to continuing in that right direction in a positive manner. Remember, our, our, our children are looking at us and, and they hear and they see a lot harder than what we hear and we see. Actions speak louder than words. So we can speak words, but what they look at is our actions. I'm also happy that we're continuing to increase our bus drivers pool and I'm happy that we're adding more field trips for our students. And that presentation by um Farmer Anna was absolutely incredible and I can't wait to see her farm on September sixth. So again, let's excite kindness, healthfulness, patience, and be happy to come to work. And you know, we are really, the board is basically um giving direction that we're really gonna cut out a lot of the nonsense and hold people accountable for the things that they, the rumors and the actions that they bring to the district. So be prepared for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Benz? Good evening, everybody. So I got to go to the opening night at V V M E, which was always parent-packed, like there's like no room in the N P R. Um I always enjoy the start of a new school year more than I enjoy the start of a calendar year. With the school year, you're in it, you've got a new class. There's always new hope that things are gonna go good this year, whether you're a student or a t- teacher, I feel. I always, you know, if la- last year was, was hard, there's always hope for this year. Um I especially love the back-to-school shopping. You know, this is my, my tenth year te- teaching and I really do enjoy going to school, you know. Um I want to wish the kids, you know, a great school year. Do your homework. Ask for help. There are grown, grownups who want, want to help you. That's what, what we're here for. Grownups, do your homework. Ask for help. Because some, sometimes that, that, that math, I'm tell, telling you, I, I, I do not go, go past fifth, fifth grade. So that, that's my, that, that's my limb, the him, the bent. But no, um, parents, you know, if you have quick questions, please ask. You know, you don't know unless you, you, you ask. Being here on the board, I've learned so much as a te- teacher and as a parent. I've had parent, parents come to me and I have said, you know, you, you can ask this, this is the way. I didn't know all this prior. Um as a te- teacher, you know, I, I'm asked questions and it's like, holy cow, I know, know this answer. Um I am very blessed to be here. I appre- appreciate being here. Um I, in my work, in my home and here, I try to set a good example. I try to treat others the way that I want to be treated. Um as a te- teach- teacher, I want to be that pos- positive influ- influence for the kids. And I, I know what it's like to be hit. I know what it's like to be down. I know when you feel you're at the end of your rope and all you can- I know when you feel you're at the end of your rope and all you can do is just reach up. Um, so I always try to be that hand, that hug that somebody may need. You never know. And I hope that, I don't know, I guess when the time comes that I have passed, that I have made enough of an impact, that I fill a church. That's my goal in life. Sounds kind of greedy, but I want to be such a good per person that I fill a church and that you all come to my funeral. So I'm not going anywhere when I'm old. I'm just saying, I'm just saying because I've had friends that filled a church and I was like, wow, he really touched a lot. So you know, you want to be that, that one that fills the church because of all the lives you've touched. Okay, and that's it. Thank, thank you.
Well, I try to stay serious. I really do. I don't know how I'm going to come behind Benz now. So I'm going to say that I am truly excited about this school year coming. I want to say welcome back to um, our A S D family. I am going to say happy birthday to trustee Webster, who has a birthday coming up after mine. I'm her age backwards.
No way.
Okay, 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 okay. Not yet. However, I do want to say that I don't want to, I concur with everything that everyone has said tonight. I do want to say that when things are said that are not true, that they're hurtful. Remember that throughout this school year, I'm a teacher first, being kind and having laughter is my mission in life. I want to be kind to others. I want to laugh. I want to have fun, but it is hurtful when you know that things are being said that are not true. Please remember that we treat each other with respect. We say things that are positive. And just remember cultivating the creative kindness that we have for this school year. That's all I'm going to say. There was a lot of positive, positive words that were said here tonight. And I hope that who's ever watching, and I will know that people will be talking about it tomorrow in the break room or they'll call somebody tonight and send somebody a text message tonight. I hope that when it is relayed, it is relayed positive. With that being said, seventeen point zero one.
President La French, can I just wish you and trustee Webster a happy birthday?
Anytime.
Yes, happy birthday. I'm sorry. We meet in up for cut pics, right?
Later.
Hey, okay.
Okay, we can sing later. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Webster, I motion to adjourn.
Ben's, I sec- second. Open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. The time is now nine fourteen. We are in adjournment. Thank you. Everyone out in Zoom land and here, please have a safe travels.